Meeting will now come to order. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moment of silence, please. Thank you. You may be seated. Okay, the first item or second item on the agenda, approval of the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda submitted.
Do I hear a second? Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. Motion carries. Is there any recognition at this time? No recognition. Public comment, if anyone would like to get up and speak. Now's your time.
You would do that now?
I've got another superintendent's update.
Listen, just in a second.
I don't consider you public, but it's up to you. Will they wait?
Just wait just a minute, because it'll be quick.
Absolutely.
Okay, so does anyone else want to get up and speak? Public comment?
Madam Chairman, members of the board, Phil Hensley, District 3. I had a question, and I've already got my answer, but I'll... Dr. Austin said to answer it, I mean, ask it so he can answer it. I have a question of if the school day could be extended from 2:00 to 3:00 to allow students to get that extra hour of instruction. But I understand that we have a seven-hour day that the teachers run a contract for. Because of the time they're coming in, we can't do that. My concern was to get an extra hour of instruction. I've got four great grandchildren in school that could use it. But I understand the answer, and I think Dr. Austin's going to address that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hensley and Ms. Hensley. Okay, any board comments?
Yeah, I just want to say that certainly was sad to hear that Ms. Lorraine Engel, who was a longtime typing teacher at Joneson High School, certainly when I was there, tells you how long she was there. She passed away last week, and I wanted to just say something in her memory. She's a fine lady.
I had her in school as well. So she was a fine teacher. One of my favorites.
I saw the passing of Nat Kredlin.
Absolutely.
Like a teacher.
Yes. Yes.
Pauline Smith, actually, too.
Oh, I didn't realize that. So sorry. She's a retired teacher from the system. Anything else? Any more comments? Okay, under the consent agenda, we go this item by item. Have a few questions. But A, approval of minutes from the October the 8th, 2020 regular meeting. Do I hear a motion to accept those?
Motion, second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. Motion carries. Approval of claims and expenditures. I do have a question. I've been asked several times questions about budget and expenditures. So when I look on this, on the computer, I don't see a line for appropriations. And if you don't have appropriations, you cannot see if you're over budget, under budget. And as board members, we are responsible for this. So I would like to request from now on that appropriations be listed. And in turn, I would like to have a written copy of the agenda. Again, written typed.
Over the agenda.
Yeah. If you're wanting one too.
Yes. I would like one as well.
A printed copy?
Yes. I mean, I want what's on the computer, but I want a printed copy also.
Okay.
Like a packet that Mr. Williams received.
Yes, ma'am. May I make a comment?
Yes.
Under claims and expenditure, if you can mouse over. We have a report that shows the appropriation by line. I'll come up here so you can see me, Mr. Hartley. Sorry. If you look under the expenditure detail, and it's under revenues also, you can see the expenditures and the outstanding encumbrances and the appropriation in the far left corner. So we've got an appropriation by line item.
But this is just for the month, right?
No, ma'am, that's for the year. If you scroll down.
Year-to-date.
That's year-to-date, and as you can see, it's zeros right now. We've had some challenges with RDA, and most of the time, if you look at some previous reports, we've got those in there based on what was approved in the budget in March, actually, re-approved in May. So typically, those are in there, and it has appropriations and an encumbrance. Encumbrance means that we've issued a PO, we intend to expend money on that. And then you can see the expenditures for October, the expenditures year-to-date. If you would like a report different than that, we can see what we can come up with. But the appropriations, it has a line in there, and typically, it's got numbers in there, and...
No, no.
Can you speak to that, Ms. Williams? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Put you on the spot.
I'm actually going to be putting the appropriations in this, is what was going on, because we've got some hair in my hands adjusting the budget. But those will be put in there, so that we'll see how much was budgeted and how much is left over.
Yes, that's what I meant for that.
Okay.
There's a total by line, there's a total by fund. I mean, all those details, again, should be in there, but again, we've had some challenges with our software.
Because on my computer, that, it doesn't show it.
Okay.
Mine as well.
So that will be for him. Okay. It is... Anyone else have any questions? About the claims and expenditures? Do you have anything? Mr. Williams, you have anything? Mr. Kibler?
Rob should be saying so.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the claims and expenditures?
I move.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. Motion carries. Okay, reports of the board. Does anyone have a report? Mr. Williams might, he's got a conference to attend online, doesn't he? November, the Virginia School Board Association. Okay. Anyone else? It's got VSPA proposed legislative positions. Any questions? Don't think they understand what it is. Okay, do... There's nothing to prove there, just reports.
Aye.
Okay, now, reports of the division superintendent.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I want to... The first item that we got on here is dual enrollment update, and I'd be glad to have with us from the 40th Senate District for the Commonwealth of Virginia, Senator Todd Pillion. I think he's going to be doing some introductions also. We also have with us the chair of the Board of Directors from Lincoln Memorial University, Dr. Pete DeBusk. So thrilled to have these two gentlemen with us, but beyond that, thrilled to be able to partner with them about opportunities that we're able to provide our students. So that being said, Senator Pillion, Dr. DeBusk, you're welcome to come up.
Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you, Chairman Ely, for allowing me to speak to the board. Board members, thank you for having me here this evening. Dr. Austin, thank you for that introduction. As he said, I am the senator for the 40th Senate District of the Virginia General Assembly. I represent the counties of Lee, Scott, Wise, Smith, With, Washington, and Grayson, as well as the city of Bristol. But I never miss an opportunity to let everyone know that I am from right here in Lee County, from the lower end, you can call it that if you're from there, you can't if you're not. I am from Ewing. I am a proud graduate of 1992 class of Thomas Walker High School, and a very proud graduate of the 1996 class of Lincoln Memorial University. And it's the intersection of those two fantastic learning institutions that bring us here this evening. I have family members that are both educators and students in your school system, so I know that it's a great one. My success, I can attribute to what, my days at Thomas Walker and my days at Lincoln Memorial University. And I'm not doubting that you are doing a great job in the time of the pandemic, unprecedented times, and you are still making it happen, and that is to be commended. What we are simply wanting to do is make that education even better and brighter for the students that deserve it here in Lee County. And that's why we're here this evening, is to talk to you about the Health Science Institute, a partnership with Lincoln Memorial University, and our postgraduate programming. We now have a vet school, a DO school, a fantastic nursing program. We are starting up a dental school, a law school. We have, if you want it, we've got it, and we want the best and the brightest of Lee County to take advantage of that. And the way that we can do that is provide them with an opportunity to have an even better education while in high school here in the county. To further explain this, the Health Science Institute, I'd like to introduce one of my mentors, and who I consider probably one of the most, if not the most successful graduates of Thomas Walker High School, if not the entire Lee County school system, and that's Dr. Pete DeBusk. You may know him from as chairman of the Board of Trustees at LMU. You may know him as chairman of the Board of DeRoyal Industries. You may know him, like many of us do, as a good friend. So without further ado, I'd like to welcome him up here to talk to you about what we want to do to help the students of your school system.
Thank you, Mr. Pillion, and we're very proud of you.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
And I will say this, this is the first school system in Virginia that we are talking about doing this. I would like to see it throughout the entire 40th Senate District, but what better place to start it than right here?
Yes, yes, I agree.
You know, I hope y'all can edit some pieces out of this meeting. I really had planned, you see, as another job that Todd has had in his youth, he worked at DeRoyal Industries. And I was going to share some real funny things with you all about Todd, but now I can't. I think he had nightmares. He used to roll up the soft bandages, and it had a little machine, and I think he had nightmares of rolling, you know, surgical bandages. Anyhow, we both laughed about that. No, what, I guess to best build a situation, there's a little buildup to this, how this sort of come about. Things evolve, you know, and undergo metamorphosis and changes and all that. Well, I've been on the LMU board for about 37 years, and I've seen a lot happen. And I've been chairman for 21, 20, going on 21 years, and they asked me to be chairman, and I'm fortunate, I know nothing about education, but I know how to run a business. And the only way I can run LMU is a business model. And LMU's different, it's not tenured, like the state schools and the many other universities. So you either produce, or you don't stay there. So it's just hard back rules, you know, we want production. Well, I started through the years before the medical school came about. See, the medical school, I was on the board in Washington, and MedPAC Commission, and that's where I met Dr. Stowers, got the idea, why could we not do this, and et cetera, et cetera, and I won't take you through that. But where I want to get to is during that time, we messed around with trying to do a high school, parts of a school. It wasn't real, it wasn't put together real good, so I sort of just tore it down and started all over, because we were never going to get the quality of professors at LMU that we wanted. Unless we took and hired young, vivacious people, as well as some mixed, as well, different ages, but we went after a lot of young people, and they had children. Oh, boy, you just couldn't get them in Harrogate, Tennessee, Tennessee school systems, and I don't mind saying this, it never was as good as Virginia. Neither was Kentucky. At LMU, the valedictorians, every year, just about every year, you know where they come from? Right up through here. Right up through here, they did. And so we had to have better professors, and we got them in, so we took and we reworked that, it's now K through 12, reworked the school system, and started educating their kids. But you know what? We found out, well, these are professors and stuff, but these other kids from the communities around, you know what, they did just as good as the other kids did. Tells you something, doesn't it? That they were exposed. Then we come along, we got the idea, well, look, some of these juniors and seniors that are pretty good students, let's just let them go to college too while they're here. So as a junior and senior, you can go to take college courses with our college students. You know, that worked pretty well. They give us ideas about, you know, prepping these kids, maybe taking a year out of their track, you know, where they would get through college faster. So we did that, and that worked awful well. So what happened, and the reason I'm here tonight, recently, we says, wait, let's take this thing farther. So last year, we decided to go to Knoxville. Knoxville, you know, Oak Ridge is some 14 miles away. You've got the largest number of PhDs in the world in one spot. I was on the ORNL board, and at that time, we had 2,000 PhDs. So there's a good genetic pool out there. Of course, I wanted that for LMU. And so we've got a medical school out there now, we've got a nursing school, a PA school, a PT school, an OT school. Soon, we took over the old St. Mary's Hospital tower, I'm rebuilding that, and that's the darndest mess I've ever got into, but I'm getting it done. Costs a lot of money, but we're going to put optometry, and we're going to put dental in there. So health science areas, and the prerequisite for health sciences, we got the idea that we start a health science institute. The health science institute is we would go into these high schools, and junior and senior year, give the students an opportunity, they had to be good students. I mean, this is tough stuff. But we give them an opportunity to take college anatomy, and actually be exposed to cadavers, and raise the bar. And, boy, do they ever so much like what's going on in Knoxville. I mean, we can't react fast enough. COVID has certainly given us a huge problem. But personally, I looked at that, and by the way, we pay for it. Kids don't pay for it. We pay for it. LMU pays for it, and they get a college credit, they get college credits for this. That's on us. We want to raise the bar. Well, of course, being from the big city of Rose Hill, you know, I think about roots, I think about, you know, the area that Todd and I are from, what have you, and I thought, if we're going to do this for Knoxville, we're sure going to do it for those mountain kids. And there's a lot of prep work, but it can be done. It can be done, and some of these students, there've been a lot of smart people come out of these mountains. Oh, my gosh, a lot of smart people. And what you would like to do is you'd like to raise the bar for the kids up here. So what we want to do, the same thing we're offering in Knoxville, we want to offer it to the students of Lee County, we're going to do it for Harlan, Kentucky, we're going to do it for all these areas. And the thing of it is, is it's online, four days a week, one day, come to the university, and you will be introduced to a real anatomy lab where there's cadavers and what have you. And we're going to do a lot of virtual reality as well to give, that's a new move in education, virtual reality, and so finally, that's got economical enough to where each kid could have a headset, and the capabilities of learning the endocrine system, the circulatory system, the pulmonary system, et cetera, et cetera, that is really a big aid in learning the anatomy of a human being. We're eventually going to do this in veterinary medicine. The veterinary medicine world has not caught up yet having the content available. So this is the way we're moving, and here's the thing we want to do, is we want to really be involved with this school system. We want these good kids, we want to help them all we can, give them an opportunity to do this. And just think, look, we want them to come to LMU, but hold on a minute. If we help them in high school, and they raise the bar, we're not going to worry about that, you know? We're going to worry about what have we done for those kids, and that's the mission. And I've had to remind people since I've become chairman of the board that LMU belongs to the mountain people. There are no borders. There's no difference in what someone is pays for tuition, except the kids that are really, in a hard way, we do have lots of scholarships that we do give out to those kids. Now, they're the ones that get our scholarships. And I think y'all understand why. But we want to take, and we don't want to just take a lick at it, we've got a LMU group up here in southwest Virginia, but we're going to get them involved with this, and let's look for opportunities, and look for students, and what have you, and let's all be involved in trying to raise the bar for these students. And as you know, there's many challenges today, COVID's one of them, but that is what this is all about. And we're going to work at it. I mean, we're not going to just hit it a lick and walk. We're going to be around, and there'll be someone signed at the school, and to do whatever we need to do to accommodate. That's the way it needs to be. Now, what questions do you have, Mr. Hensley?
Well, I would thank you for coming, because I'm a graduate of class of 81, and I'm one of those mountain kids that had to work their way through getting my education. And I became an educator and taught school here in Lee County. And I think this is a wonderful thing, because it will give our kids hope for their future to have this opportunity. And I just really think, I just really appreciate you coming here and having this for them to turn to.
Thank you. People don't realize, that veterinary school right down the road there, you wouldn't believe, I don't know how to measure it, but how much money that generates right in western tipple Lee County. Colleges produce, graduate schools, it's much more than having a job at a factory. It produces a lot of cash. Each year, in that tri-state area, we put 700-plus million dollars in circulation. It moves seven times, and our payroll is over 100 million now. And we put some money, they closed Middlesbrough if it wasn't for LMU, they'd roll up the sidewalks. But we're there, and that's going to grow, and we're in Lee County, and I've got some other things I'm going to, if I can just, if the Lord will give me a little more time, how is it I'm trying to earn my way in heaven? But anyhow, I have a good time with this. This is something that's, I actually had more, I had more fun at changing LMU, bringing it back, and repocusing it than I did building DeRoyal Industries. And DeRoyal Industries works 2,000 people today, all over the world, and I have a son that runs that. And, but I've had a, really a great time doing this, and people don't realize it, but LMU's medical school is bigger than all the other schools in the state of Tennessee put together in medicine. We're the biggest PA school in the nation. We're the biggest nursing school in the state of Tennessee. Okay? Veterinary medicine, if what we've applied for, it'll make us the largest veterinary medicine school in the country. So I've really been trying to grow this thing, me and a whole bunch of lawyers, okay? Because you had to fight for it. You understand. And, but you have to get in there with the accrediting bodies and work hard, but you've got to have a good product. You've got to have a good product. Yeah, and we've come up, up, up in the state of Tennessee. Right now, in the national polls, and US News and World Reports, and some of their reports, we're number four in the state, in the state of Tennessee. You've got Vanderbilt at first, Belmont second, Union College out there, it's a college for ministry that does real well. But then, there's LMU. But I don't know if we can take Vanderbilt, but we're sure going to try to get them others. Anyhow.
I want to say I also appreciate the fact that you've appeared here and addressed the board about this issue. Anytime that we can collaborate with LMU on a program that'll help our students, I think I can speak for everybody on this board, we're all in. And I wanted to ask you, though, with the programs in the counties and states that you're already working with on this health science program, have you picked up anything that would help us market that to our students? A specific way to market that to our students to get more interest?
Well, I tell you what really gives, if you can get them down there, and all of a sudden, they're drinking water through a fire hose, you get them over the shock, and let them see, you can fit in here, you can do this, and I've always liked for their parents to come to a night down there and let them go through the cadaver, you know, go into the cadaver area, and there's bodies, and that gets their attention, it gets mom and dad's attention, you know? But I'll tell you one short, little funny little story. My mother, Maude DeBusk, she's still alive, she's 98, and I talked to her today, and, boy, she has good days and bad days and all this, and I said to my mother, I says, Mom, I says, you know, maybe you ought to go down here to LMU with me and go into the cadaver room and see if you recognize anybody. I thought she was going to hit me. So sometimes I get a little out of control, but anyhow, we're going to reach out to LMU, Todd and I, you know, Todd's helping me with that on the board now, and I put, he's over the whole health science thing there as a board member. I don't guess I'm supposed to tell that, but he is. And we've got to have young people like that coming on, because time's marching on with me. And any other questions?
I do want to thank you for coming and bringing this to our attention. We've got the principal of Thomas Walker here with us. You said someone will be assigned to the school, you said, so if a child wants to do this, they can talk directly to somebody at LMU?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I was going to order.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And, oh, this is, if you can get this under your belt, I don't care where you go, it's going to really help you.
I appreciate you coming, appreciate Mr. Pillion, and what he does for us at State Level.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
As you can see, we've got some gentlemen and others that are passionate about education and passionate about Lee County and our students. So it's great to have elected officials that not only invest in us from Richmond, but also take the time to visit us back in Lee County, even though I know it's stomping grounds. And the same thing for Dr. DeBusk, appreciate the partnership. Later in the agenda, you'll see that we've got new course requests, and this course, Dr. DeBusk and Dr. Jowens contacted me in early August about this opportunity. We talked to Mr. Graham and Misty Jackson, the guidance counselor at Thomas Walker, talked to Ms. Sumter and the guidance staff at Lee High, and we didn't have anybody interested in it in August. So they were, they talked to us in August about students changing their schedule to take this class in September, and you remember what August was like. So, you know, with the pandemic and starting school and all that, we didn't have any takers. Nobody wanted to change their schedule, but pleased to report that we have seven students from Lee High who are interested in this program, starting in January, and we're working through some scheduling conflicts at Thomas Walker. That being said, we That being said, we have tremendous health science programs in Lee County. When I got here, certainly five school years ago, we had a thriving LPM program that's been operating for a number of years. We since have added in CNA, EMT, so Certified Nursing Assistant, Emergency Management Technician, so Emergency Medical Technician, excuse me. Those programs have been doing extremely well. We have a great anatomy and physiology class that is offered at Lee High and Thomas Walker. The Thomas Walker course is taught by Denise Carter, and they both do great jobs, the teachers at both schools. That class is dual enrolled on the Virginia side through Mountain Empire. And the conversations we've been having for the past several months is could we have that one class and have it dual enrolled through Mountain Empire and LMU? Totally different criteria, but we're working through those details. So appreciate those gentlemen being here today, but that's our dual enrollment update. We remain committed to dual enrollment, providing every opportunity that we can to our students. I'm pulling mass down, sucking in the mass more than I'm talking. So we're committed to dual enrollment. You recall two years ago was the first time we had a student graduate from Mountain Empire before they graduated from Lee High. So we continue committed to that and got several tracks, career tracks, career paths that lead to careers out of high school, but then also lead to career opportunities either through Mountain Empire, ETSU, or Lincoln Memorial. So appreciate the partnerships that we have on that front. Next up, we have the Kingsport Times News drawing cards. While we're not doing recognitions here, as you can see, we're near passing just a regular board meeting. If we brought in Kingsport Times News drawing card recognitions, we would have a packed house and have to relocate. So you can see the work of our students, supported by our teachers. I mean, it's some cute work and some incredible work. If you've not seen the list or the drawings, these are public in the Kingsport Times News as well as the write-in portion of it is the next section. So Ms. Wells, thank you for zipping through that for us. Next up, we have an update on enrollment. As you can see, we are at 2,913 students as of the end of October. Now, our average daily membership is 2,905, going back to what we've talked about, that puts us 25 students under budget. So under budget means that we're going to be short on revenue, which we'll talk about here in a little bit when we're asking for an additional appropriation with some Corona Relief Funds, CARES Act funding, and we'll talk more about that as we go along. But we are very, very cognizant of the fact that we are below enrollment and continue to maintain that. Now, the good news of that, as you can see, last month we were 2909, this month we're 2913. So it appears that we've picked up a few more students, but this continues to be something that we monitor and watch closely. Operations update, as you can see, the things that the maintenance staff worked on. And then also I provided you a copy of a grant notification that we received just about an hour before the board meeting from the School Nutrition Department out of the Department of Education, where we're going to be adding a stove and a stove at Dryden and an ice maker at Elydale in the cafeterias. So always seeking funding opportunities and just thrilled to report that information. On the side of operations update also, we've talked about how we operate the schools as far as the schedule. I've shared with you information from Dr. Cantrell, Leno Wisco. So if you've got questions on that, there's some concerns about uptick in cases. At this point, administration doesn't suggest that we make any changes operationally, but I will defer to you if you have any questions. And to address Mr. Hensley's inquiry, we've talked about, currently we're running an 8:30 to 2 o'clock school day. The reason that we propose that administratively is because our teachers are on a seven-hour contract. That gives our teachers an hour and a half every day to plan, to reach out to remote learning students because they're doing a combined in-person and remote learning classroom. So it gives them an hour and a half to do that as well as the Friday remote day that we already have in the schedule. So that being said, the other opportunity that we have, and Mr. Hensley and I talked about, is if there are students with identified needs, you realize the school board and administration providing childcare from 2 o'clock to 4 o'clock. We have some parents who have requested tutoring during that time, and our staff's available for that. So if that's something that's a need, put that out publicly, that please feel free to contact the principal of the school and they can attend childcare Monday through Thursday for two hours and then Friday as needed. So even though it's childcare, we also can do tutoring during that time. It's not just entertainment, we try to make it meaningful. So wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. And that wraps it up for me. Any questions?
Well, as far as the cases that have been happening in the schools, are we still quarantining like we did start with? I mean, it seems like we're written quite a few cases in the various schools.
We don't quarantine. Those are notifications that come from the Department of Health to the individuals and then that's self-reported by the individuals. The only notices we get is staff and families are expected to notify us if they have a positive case. Now, that's self-reported. We don't get a report from VDH or from anybody that says we have a positive case in schools. It's all self-reported. So any related quarantines from staff, we usually get those because of course staff's going to be off for 14 days and they're in quarantine. If they're positive, they test positive, they're out for 10 days, and we have an administrative excuse on that as far as the absentee. It doesn't impact the individual's leave balances or their pay. So we don't quarantine, that's VDH does that. But, you know, has there been an uptick? Minor, but as you're aware, you know, we put out notices almost daily at different schools. So nothing at this point has hit us operationally like it did in late August, excuse me, when we ended up going remote for a period of time. So but at this point, no operational impact that administration would recommend a change.
Okay. I hope that we've dealt with an uptick, but I'm afraid we're in that area where we're going to get several more new cases.
That's right. You can do the better to call up when you're talking.
There was a concern in Blackwoods, a couple of students that were positive, that their class wasn't told to quarantine or the teacher.
We don't make those determinations. That's made by the Health Department because those individuals, when they test positive at a doctor's office, the doctor's office is required to notify the Health Department, which then contacts individuals. And the letter that we send out says that you'll be contacted. And the rule of thumb on that from the Health Department, as we've discussed, you have to be within six feet of somebody for 15 minutes cumulative within the course of a day. And that's a determination that's made by the Health Department, not by our staff. So if you've been within six feet of somebody who tests positive for 15 minutes cumulative over the course of a day, then you would be in quarantine. So if those two students were not within six feet of somebody, that's the reason that nobody else was placed in quarantine. And again, that's not a, that's not a Lee County Public Schools decision, that's not a Department of Education, that's a Leno Wisco Health Department decision that's made in consultation with the Virginia Department of Health.
So they contact that school?
They contact the individuals. If I test positive today, then what they will do is they will ask me, who have you been in contact with for the last 48 hours? Now, I've not experienced this personally, but I know the procedure. So who have you been in contact within the last 48 hours? And let's say the closest ones to me right now are Mr. Hines and Mr. Williams, we're more than six feet, actually we're more like 10 because I'm talking. So, you know, as long as you're not within six feet of somebody, I know who I've been within six feet of today for 15 minutes. And I give that list to the Health Department. Now, then those individuals either confirm or deny that they were within six feet of me. And then there's a lot of times that they may talk to you and you say, well, no, actually, Mr. Hartley was closer to him, and so you need to talk to Mr. Hartley. So, you know, that's, the Department of Health almost does contact tracing as a skip tracing almost. They have to find out who talked to who, for how long, and when. So it's a, it's a very thorough process that they go through. But we are not involved.
Our school system cannot put somebody in quarantine, correct?
No, sir.
Not on the board.
No, sir. Now, we can notify the, we can notify the Health Department of, hey, listen, we've got concerns to your point of, you know, that we had these two students in class and we thought others should be in quarantine. What we advise people is if you've got that concern, share that with the Health Department because it very well may be that, you know, I was close enough to Mr. Hartley, but I like Mr. Hartley, so I don't want him to be in quarantine for 14 days. So I'm not going to tell that he was close to me. So that's how the Health Department, if you have a concern, call them and say, I was, you know, I know that John Smith was in class with these other students and I just wanted to share this concern. But that's an anonymous recording. But that's not something.
Or the ones like that with the teacher?
Could, yes, ma'am. Teacher, parent, principal, we've done.
Get in touch with the students or the Health Department and let them know the students they have in their class.
Yes, ma'am.
And that there has been a positive case. Do they do that?
When we, yes, ma'am, when we get a positive case, we have, and that's one of the reasons we have cohorts and we have assigned seats in every classroom. Once we receive the notification, one of the things the Health Department requests of us is they want to know, did the child ride a bus? If so, what bus and where do they sit? They want our seating chart. And then they find out who's sitting around that, they ask us for the contact information for those individuals, and they start contacting. Same thing in the classroom. We have seating charts and of course, we try to do six feet social distance, three is a minimum. So if we maintain six, there's a good possibility we can have students test positive in a classroom and it not impact the classroom at all. So yes, ma'am, if we do things the way that you all approve through mitigation efforts, that's the reason we do what we do. That's the reason we don't serve lunches in cafeterias and we clean, and our staff's done a very good job of that. And as long as we maintain that vigilance and don't get, what's the phrase that I've heard, COVID fatigue was the phrase. You know, that we're just tired of this and we just let our guard down and then we end up having an outbreak. Now, that's possible, but as long as we do what you all approved within Department of Health guidelines as well as Department of Education guidelines, then we can operate schools safely for students who choose to do that. And we can also serve children at home who choose the remote option. So any other questions?
Not a question about the school system, but Lee County being on the uptick of cases. Obviously, I work out of state, not up here as much as I used to be. The prison, I'm told the prison and the nursing home is where a lot of these positives are coming from. I know the papers are with us. And Mr. Hartley, does anybody know? I mean, I'm asking anybody in the building. I really don't, I'd like to know.
I think that's what's driving it.
I hear.
I see the reports every night.
I've heard 30 to 40 cases in the federal prison, same or more at local nursing homes.
But then it spreads out to the world, and they take it to family members, and that's what's going to drive, keep driving it up.
I've heard the same rumors, but I can't confirm that.
Yes, ma'am.
On the Federal Bureau of Prisons website, it actually tells how many cases are active, how many have recovered, both staff and inmates. And I don't remember the exact number, but total cases recovered and active was like 130 some.
At the prison?
At the prison. Of inmates. I think they were about, I don't remember what, but it was, they say it was broken down too.
Right.
And someone who has family in the nursing home said it was up. Now, this is just idle to your site, but their parents are, they said it was about 100% at Lee, we have. And as far as residents go, and then as far as employees, they're just going 32, but I don't know how many employees.
Understanding another one of the people that were in the nursing home passed away this morning.
Yes.
Thank you.
Last report I saw, like 66 inmates and 10 staff were active.
Active. Thank you. Back to you, Madam Chair. I'll hang out here for action discussion.
Okay. Any unfinished business? If not, we're ready to go to action, slide this discussion out of us.
We have a first review of the 2021 calendar available. We have worked with our three communication committees, the teacher support staff, as well as parent communication committees, and developed this. There's some survey results on here from the initial polling that we did. You can see the start of school and then you'll notice one of the big things is Friday being blue, which means that Friday is a remote learning day. Administratively, we recommend that because it's not in response to the pandemic, it's in response to 21st century education. We feel like with, because of the pandemic and because of technology in general, we feel like there's going to be a percentage of our students who are going to be working from home at some point, if not for the majority of their career. So we feel like that's a skill that needs to be learned and it feels, we feel like it's something that we can teach from an early age of how to function on your own in the 21st century with technology. So that's the reason in conversations with communication committees, I mean, it was 90-some percent recommended that we stay with that for the next school year. Not because of the virus, not because of pandemic, but because of, again, learning opportunities and where we are with technology, both from a teacher's standpoint as well as from a learning standpoint. So of course, this is all up for debate. It's something that this is a first review and we can get feedback between now and the December board meeting when we'll ask for your approval on that.
Can we talk about it?
Yes, sir. That's why we're here.
We, I discussed this a little bit, and I asked, why is those Fridays going remote for next year? Obviously, we don't, we don't know how this COVID is going to turn out. It's not all new to everybody, it's still new to everybody. We're not doctors. You're not doctors, teachers are not doctors or nurses as far as that goes. But myself personally, I don't like remote learning. I like in-person learning. My kids do better in person. If we can build a future, I think it needs to be built in person. That's just my opinion. I don't want to say that publicly. I know several kids, students on my end that struggle. Some of it may be just laziness, some of it may be because it's fully remote and they just can't do it. And it's about that simple. I would like to really consider not doing this remote day, but I'm open for discussion. And just like this first review, just putting that out there.
And again, this is not in response to the pandemic, other than the pandemic has kind of set the precedent for this one day a week remote learning. We've talked about Fridays present, I'm going to say challenges for us from a learning standpoint as well as from an attendance standpoint, because we always take a hit on Fridays. Lee County tends to be a community or appears to be a community that likes to take Friday off. So this plays into remote learning and so, I mean, it presents an opportunity.
Not only it plays into remote learning, but it plays into jobs. You start taking days off and this and that, and other, we're going to not need as many people. If you don't have kids in the building, cleaning after them, cooking for them, et cetera, we need the jobs in Lee County, our kids need in-person learning, in my opinion.
Well, I have to agree, because from a teacher's standpoint, yes, children will learn a lot better when they're in school. But during this COVID time, I think we've got to be considerate and let the parents that want to keep their children out, keep them out. And I do agree that some are having a really hard time, but then there's some that are doing well. So I guess it's one of those things you just have to figure out, grade, disagree, whatever needs to be done.
Right. We're talking next year's calendar. We are waiting to see what vaccine they say is coming out. Hopefully that has a big impact on this thing. I hope it does. If it don't, we're going to be remote. That's just the way it looks to me. But to build a future, to go forward remote for the whole year, not knowing how it's going to go, I don't like the idea, but that's my opinion.
Well, I'm hoping for short term, if there's an outbreak, you know, short term of remote.
This is not talking about doing remote for the year, it's just remote on Fridays for the school year. That's what's being proposed. And what we would administratively recommend from here on is allowing parents who choose a remote-only option, as long as those students are being successful, that they have that option. And as long as the Department of Education allows us to do that and you all approve it, then that's an opportunity that we can make available to families that if they choose it from here on, almost like homebound, that they can do on their own with support from teachers. And we do a virtual academy, if you will, and we can do that and be successful in it. Again, this is just, the Friday is only as remote learning is intended to address 21st century opportunities and, you know, how to use technology. So again, serve at will and pleasure of a board. So if this is something that you all as a board say you don't want to consider, you can see the survey results that came up. And we've also proposed in here that we're going to be surveying staff about some dates. You'll notice in there, there's some slashes and there's some Xs, that if we change certain dates to school days, then we can be closed on certain days. And that's spelled out more in the explanation. And the slashes that you'll notice up there is, how did the remote learning week go for the election day week? Do we want to consider building in some remote learning weeks during the common times when we either have weather or just opportunities for students to learn at home for a week? So that's something if you all as a board want to do, we can poll our community, our students and find out and get that back to you for the next meeting. So we've had mixed reviews on the remote learning week, to be frank. We've had some parents say it was great, and we've had some parents say teachers didn't do a good job preparing lessons. And so everybody's learning in this. It will take us, in my opinion, two to three years to learn how to learn remotely and to provide those opportunities from a teacher's standpoint and be equitable. Any other?
And I have a feeling that it's not going to be over. I'd say we've got another year looking at COVID issues. I hope not, but.
It's possible.
That's what I'm afraid of. And, you know, because so many people don't want to do the wearing masks, washing hands.
And with your all's support and support, we can offer those opportunities to students and move forward with whatever we need to do and adjust if we have an outbreak in a particular school or across the division that we can't operate. So we'll continue to address it that way. Any other feedback on the draft calendar? Back to you, Madam Chair.
Okay. How about B, action, pending to approve new courses for year 2021, 2022 school year?
For those of you who are doing this for the first time, you'll notice that in this we have several courses listed. And what these are, teachers say, hey, I'd like to develop this particular course and offer it to students. And it's one of these things that we'll put it in a program of studies, make it available to students, and if they choose not to take that class, then we won't offer it. If that becomes a popular class, that we can award credit through the Department of Education, then we will do so. You'll notice in their gross anatomy dual enrollment course at LMU, what we spoke about earlier, so thrilled to offer that opportunity and look to add that as a combined class with anatomy physiology, so it would count for both LMU and for Mountain Empire and going back to our Friday thing. The thing about remote Fridays, if we do that, that would allow our students to come to school four days a week and then go to the cadaver lab, or go to Mountain Empire on a Friday, and do some other things that wouldn't take them away from instruction, it would just allow us opportunities to supplement instruction and provide some additional opportunities without impacting their instructional day. So that's another selling point on that. So here's the list of courses. Be glad to address any questions you have.
So if we approve these, and there's not enough students, then we don't have.
Yes, ma'am. Correct. This just puts it in the program of studies that we can, based on the request from the teacher, they would like to teach this, we'll put a description in the program of studies, and if there's not an interest in it, we don't offer.
And, you know, also along with LMU, what they're wanting to do, which I think is wonderful, you've got your Linnwood Hope Governor's School that offers a lot of that.
Yes, ma'am.
Of course, we say that there's not many people taking that opportunity, but that's a very good opportunity for those that are interested.
I really believe our councilors do a good job promoting that program, but it's not, as you're indicating, not very well attended and hasn't been. I don't know if it's distance proximity.
I think they should really take advantage of it, but Lee County isn't.
Correct.
So do I hear a motion to approve the new courses for 2021, 2022 school year?
Make motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor say aye. And you oppose say no. Motion carries. Okay. Action, pending to request an additional appropriation of $3,494,052.61 for fiscal year 2021 from the Lee County Board of Supervisors to access revenues from the CARES Act Fund, ESSER Fund, GEAR Fund, RUSP Grant, and proceeds from the loan for the roof at Dryden Mill entry.
Administration's making this request because we have to ask for additional appropriation from the Lee County Board of Supervisors because of the various federal grants that have been issued through the Department of Education. Of course, the budget that you adopted in May does not include these because none of these were available at that point. So for us to be able to access these on the expenditure side, we have to request access to these funds from the revenue side. So these revenues will be coming in to the Board of Supervisors. The school board just has to ask permission to access those funds. So there's a detailed breakdown on what each one of these is, the different dollar amounts is in the action item, and the descriptions for each one is in the attached documents. So we've discussed this individually, and so if you have any questions, be glad to address those, but it's a chunk of change that will help offset some of the loss of revenue that we've experienced through the decline in student enrollment, as well as the expenses that we're incurring from having bus aids on every bus, from the extra PPE, personal protective equipment, as well as the hand sanitizer, the various cleaning things that we're making available in classrooms and our staff are utilizing on a daily basis. So this helps offset those increased costs. So administration recommends approval as presented. This also accounts for the loan that you approved and the Board of Supervisors approved to complete the Dryden roof.
On the Dryden roof, I was understanding that that $300,000 was to cover everything except the O eight addition. Was that not included in the bid?
Repair or replace.
Replace.
Repair or replace.
Like the old gym and the kitchen, two of the worst places.
They got replaced. It ended up being an additional, almost $80,000 that we had to do, because the initial assessment was that we could just repair those. But after they did the evaluation of those sites, we couldn't repair them, they ended up needing to be replaced. And the same thing with the metal roof. The metal roof still has functional life to it, but the appearance of it is not good. So it's functional, but that's something that we'll be talking to Mr. Hines, Mr. Williams as your budget committee about, do we want to bid out the metal replacement at Dryden and see what that cost is and see if that's something that we can get in the budget over the summer? But it was a repair or replacement, and we had intended, from an evaluation four years ago, had intended to just repair the old gym, which we couldn't do, and repair the cafeteria, which we couldn't do.
I was trying to say, those are the two worst places.
They've gotten worse in the last two years. Yes, ma'am. And they both have been totally replaced.
That's what the additional money was thought of?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. The only thing that has not, that is not new at this point is the metal piece there on the original addition. And again, it still has functional life, but the appearance of it is not much. So we're having discussions with our architect engineer about, do we want to bid that out? What do they think the approximate cost would be? We'll talk about that, and if you all have an appetite for that, we can have that as a budget discussion going into next year, would be my recommendation.
Okay. Now, I have some questions about the COVID money on the buses. Were they bid out?
No, ma'am. It's a state contract.
Okay. Every bit of it? The Ford Explorer, the Jeep Renegade?
Yes, ma'am. They were below state contract pricing.
What is it? Fifty thousand, the state contract? I mean, what is the limit?
It depends on what the specifications of the vehicle are as to what the state contract price would be.
Okay.
Now, I will say that there was a hiccup in the original document that we put in there. We had used an Excel sheet and made a mistake, and so instead of it being three Explorers, the original document that was made available yesterday showed one Explorer for $93,000. So that's been corrected, but it's three Explorers, as we discussed. It's five used buses, three new buses, one Renegade, three Explorers, and the balance went to use for bus eight.
Okay. Now, how about the used buses? That had to be contracted after. I mean, that'll be contracted, but didn't that need to be bid out?
We were looking specifically for Thomas buses, and so because there's one supplier for Thomas, there's a metric to determine what a reasonable cost on that is, and that's what we used.
All right. I think we've heard some complaints from teachers. Nigel, you want to speak to that?
Yes, I've had several contacts in the last couple of days about other areas, other counties, teachers receiving a stipend from the CARES Act?
Yeah, CARES.
I'm saying like that, yeah. What can we do to help our teachers?
It would have to be something in the budget. In our interpretation of what's come from the U.S. Treasury and from the Department of Education, stipends are not approved, and I can't speak to what other localities do, but administration's not recommending we do that. Now, of course, you can tell me to do that, but I would advise against it. And at this point, we've got CARES funding committed through a variety of means, but approaching it from that vantage point, I would advise against.
And I've read the regulations that come from Richmond. I wish you'd provide that to each board member.
Yes, sir.
Specifically that fact number two, three, and thirty-eight, or whatever it is.
Yes, sir.
It specifically says, it asks about what, who can you pay, and it says, public health official, public safety, or whatever. It's very specific, like four or five categories. I don't know, if they get audited, I don't know what they're going to do. And maybe they don't get audited and they get away with it, but I'm just telling you, that's not within the regulations for an operator.
Well, they can give a bonus based on local funding.
Based on local funding, back there.
From the Board of Supervisors.
They're not under care.
I think that's how Wise County's doing. I'm just speculating.
They are, they're using operating.
And we are getting $961,000 over their budget limit. And if we had that, I would be the first one.
That's what their Board of Supervisors have to take. They give them extra money, a million dollars every year. We don't get that.
The Board of Supervisors, our Board of Supervisors didn't appropriate anything for, that would allow us the flexibility in our operating budget to do anything extra.
Okay. Let me ask you on the cooks, you know, the ones that work during the summer?
Yes, ma'am.
You gave them what, stipend or bonus?
Yes, there was that extra pay because they were getting paid regardless, and that was something the board approved. And what we did is because they were coming in and working with the public during what was deemed a very, very hazardous time, that's why we did hazard pay. That's why we recommended hazard pay, because it was optional and we were trying to feed the public. Not every cafeteria worker came in.
Some of them, going to houses and like in the library.
Yes, sir.
Principles, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, I didn't say, but I think that's what they're calling that Wise County.
It's hazard pay, yes, ma'am.
Hazard pay, yes.
But it doesn't apply to every employee unless you're doing specific things. And again, Mr. Hines, I'll be glad to provide you the guidance that we've got from U.S. Treasury, that, you know, that's why we would recommend not doing that, but I understand other localities may interpret that differently, but. And of course, you've got legal counsel that can interpret that as well, and if he says that that's something we should have done, then we can do that, but we're already committed to buses and already committed to other things, but if there's a second round of this CRF or COVID money, then it can be a consideration. And I would anticipate that they may lighten up on that some, but in this first round, they did not. They, the feds and the state.
So you think that Wise County, if they get audited, unless it's coming from the county?
I am not giving an opinion on what Wise County does, because I don't know enough about how they did it or what they did. I can only speak about Lee County.
Mr. Starcher, what's your opinion on that?
You know, I've not looked specifically at what Wise County's done, but at the same time, if it's hazard pay and just absolutely across the board, that is looked at more like a stipend, which the regulations does not allow. So then you've got to really curtail how that's going to be a stipend, or not a stipend, sorry, in order to, in case there's an audit or something like that, in order to justify how that person got hazard pay at that amount versus somebody else. There's a lot of things that have to be worked out through that.
And in talking to legal counsel and our auditor is how we came to this recommendation. That's why the buses was the cleanest thing, because we can tie that transportation, the lack of hubs, the increased routes, the more miles, we can tie that directly to an impact from the pandemic. That's an easy tieback, and we've tied that back to regs, and it's an investment we need to make, to be honest. And I don't, I can't guarantee that we'll have this opportunity again. I mean, I'm hoping there's a second round, but we still need buses. I mean, and again, my apology on the Explorer ticket. We did not buy a $93,000 Explorer. I can't imagine I would have featured that one.
They don't make one.
I thought, well, let's cut out the bells and we just.
It'd have to be a thirty-foot lift kit, a little bit.
So that was on the state bid list? Is that what you're saying? The Ford Explorers?
It's lower price. We've gone from freedom forward at a cost that was less than the state contract.
That's why they didn't bid it out?
Correct. Now, we did contact several dealers in the area to make sure that we got the best deal, but if it's below state contract, we try to support businesses in the region.
Now, what is state contract, I must be. I mean, are you paying individually, or are you paying a whole ninety-seven thousand at once? And what is the state stipulation for buying? You said it's different for different things. How about vehicles?
With vehicles, it depends on whether you get a four-wheel drive or a two-wheel drive, whether you get the police package, whether you get, all the different options that come on there have different pricing. I'll be glad to provide that to you. It's through the Department of Planning and Budget and through the GSA, we have rates on that, and so that's how we abide by, procurement.
Bumbo.
Do you see any way to get our teachers?
Not presently, no, sir. Hopefully, we'll be able to.
What's the amount over which you have to bid out? Something, chairman?
Anything over 2,500, unless it's a state contract.
Okay.
That's how we, that's.
State contract, it's different.
Yes, that's how we can buy iPads and Chromebooks in bulk, is because it's a state contract. Once you get that, and once the state bids that out on our behalf, as long as somebody does state contract or better based on how that device is specced, and I'm talking about with a Chromebook, the size of the screen, the size of the hard drive, all the different things that go into the development of a computer, once that's done, then we can buy from any vendor as long as they provide the state contract proxy.
So you didn't have to put up bids for the Chromebooks?
Correct. Yes, ma'am. That's how we were able to procure them so quickly. As long as we get state contract or better, we're good. And Mr. Williams asked a question, while you were all talking, his question, can we do anything for teachers? In this budget cycle, it's going to be very difficult because of a drop in, or decline in revenue. We didn't do anything in that. Now, that being said, if the General Assembly holds to the minimum wage requirement that goes into effect in May, we're going to have to adjust some salary scales starting in May, and that will be any of our staff that's being paid at minimum wage, which we pay a little above a minimum wage, but the staff that are making eight dollars an hour, we'll have to bump them to ten starting in May, so we'll be dealing with that as we get near the end of the fiscal year, going into next fiscal year. As far as for teachers, funding for staff always remains a priority in a budget development process. If something comes through the next round of funding, that we can do something that's not tied to hazard pay, that's not tied to something specific, that we can do something for staff, of course, that would be an option. It was an option this time, except, again, guidance said, no, you can't do it. It was, it was one of the first things that I asked when I called these gentlemen, you know, is that something we want to consider? And then when guidance came out that said absolutely not, that's when I was like, no, we can't do that.
Okay. So if we approve this, what's that going to mean? Is there money left to be spent on, out of state?
No, is there money left to be spent? What do you mean?
Well, if we approve this request for additional appropriation, what's that going to mean? I mean, is it already been spent, or?
It's been, we've written, we've written proposals, plans to utilize this funding to either offset costs that we're experiencing or to offset loss of revenue. So between those two, that's what this revenue will cover. And what does this mean? Right off the top of my head, is the budget 42 million. I'm going to go 42 million is a good round number. That's how much authority the school board has to spend, is 42 million dollars. Well, we're going to have 45.5 million dollars of revenue. If we don't get permission to access that 45.5, all we can spend is 42.
From the Board of Supervisors.
From the Board of Supervisors, exactly. That 3.5 million dollars will be sitting in the treasurer's office, and we can't touch it. So then my job will become to balance revenues back to the 42 million dollars, because if we don't spend what's appropriated by the Board of Supervisors, I get to wear a different color of orange that I have no interest in.
Let me, we request this, it goes to Board of Supervisors. They approve it, if they approve it, the treasurer signs.
So that's basically what this item is for us to prove to be sent to Board of Supervisors?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So we're ready for a vote?
I'll make the motion.
All right. Second. Any discussions? All in favor say aye. Can you oppose? No. Motion carries. And D, action, pending to approve a 2% raise to all Head Start staff effective back to July 1, 2020. I do have a question. Does the county have to match any of that money?
No.
So we don't match anything for Head Start? It's self-sufficient.
No, we do. We do some any kind of contributions, yes, ma'am, but this, this piece of it, no, doesn't have any kind of match.
So that's totally out of funds from Head Start.
Yes, ma'am. No, I'm sorry.
Out of funds.
Yes, well, it's Head Start funds, but yes, it's federal.
Yeah. Because Title I is included if you say federal, because they hit the star, right?
Correct. Well, Head Start's a different entity in and of itself. Yes. Well, it's Head Start funds, but yes, it's federal.
Because Title I's included, if you say federal, you can say Head Start, right?
Correct. Well, Head Start's a different entity in and of itself. Title I's a different pot, Title II, Title IV, I mean, we go down to all the different funds. And of course, there's only specific ways that you can spend that money. Now, the thing that I want to say is, this has caused me some heartburn because of, to Mr. Williams' point, we're going to be giving raises to Head Start staff and to Head Start teachers that none of our other staff are going to see. It seems unfair, but what happened is when the General Assembly changed our funding and from when you approved the budget in March, we had a raise in there, which was the equivalent of about 2% for Head Start. So we, the Head Start staff wrote a grant to get 2% additional funding to offset that cost. Now, their fiscal year, fiscal years are a pain, because their fiscal year runs December 1 through November 30. Ours runs July 1 through June 30. Our grant cycles run July 1 through 27 months, through September, 27 months out. It's a fun process. So what is sitting here is five months of a 2% raise that the feds have said from Head Start, they are not going to allow us to carry over Head Start to the next fiscal year. So what happens is if you as a board don't approve this, going back to July for current staff for this five months, we're going to lose seven months of funding in the next budget cycle, because their budget cycle, again, runs December through November, ours runs July through June. So if we are able to do anything for staff next year, the school board would have to pick up any raises that's given to Head Start, because that funding wouldn't be approved. So that's why administration's recommending we do this. Even though it's inequitable, it provides an opportunity for Head Start to get a raise, but then also, school board not to pick up any cost. Now, the other caveat to this is if there is a raise or anything done with salary scales next year for staff, this 2% would already be accounted for, and we would not do a raise for Head Start staff on top of the 2% that's already there. We would recommend that you account for this, or that we account for this in that process if anything changes July 1, 2021, for our staff. Again, it causes me some heartburn because it creates inequities, but it's one of those things of balancing a budget. I don't know that we, if we say no to this, and they don't fund us starting December 1 for this raise, how we're going to pick it up next year.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve this? I make a motion. Then a second.
I'll say that.
Any discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. Motion carries. Next time is closed session, so Mr. Hines?
I move that we enter into closed session to discuss personnel under the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711, subsection A1, to discuss student discipline under the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711, subsection A2, and to discuss pending and threatened litigation under the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711, page...
Okay. Do we need a motion? I forgot.
That wasn't a motion.
Okay. Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. Motion carries.